Hello, Northlanders. Dan Williamson here with a special episode of the Duluth News Tribune Minutes. On Thursday, September 14th, candidates looking to represent District One and District Four of the Duluth City Council took the stage at a forum organized by the Duluth Chamber of Commerce and the News Tribune. The following is the complete audio of that forum. We encourage you to check your podcast feed for audio for other forums we hosted this week to give you the information you need to make decisions at the ballot box that are right for you. And now, here's the audio.
Appreciate you all being here. I know many of you stuck around from the early ones. I'll keep my comments short, but really just on behalf of Duluth Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber Foundation and Duluth News Tribune, who's our partner on this work, we really appreciate you all being here. We really appreciate our candidates showing up. We'll have an opportunity to introduce yourselves in just a moment. Just want to say again, thank you for being here. Thank you for the Duluth News Tribune for being good partners with us and putting this together. As you all know, we had a full day yesterday. That footage is already online on their website. The things we talk about here today will also be posted on their website, so we encourage you to check that out. We, of course, will share that on the Chamber's social media as well, so if you don't already follow us, please do. But without further ado, we'll jump right in. We're really grateful to have all three of you here today, and I'll turn it over to Chuck.
Thank you very much, Dan. I'm Chuck Frederick, the editorial page editor at the News Tribune. Members of our editorial board are also here. The purpose of the forums, as we've said, is to help the electorate make informed and good choices this fall. These forums will also help to inform the newspapers' endorsements in the different races. Candidates, I want to point out Kathy right here in the front, she's waving, and she is our timer, our timekeeper, and she has signs that she'll hold up, let you know how much time you have left. We will have one and a half minutes for introductory statements, one minute for closing statements at the end, and then answers to questions will be limited to one minute, and because we have three candidates, we won't be doing any sort of rebuttals or anything like that, except at the discretion of Dan and me if we feel we need to. I want to mention, too, that the folks from Speak Your Peace, a civility project, are here, and this forum and all the forums that we're hosting these two days are civility certified. With that, we will jump right in, and we'll start with introductory statements, one and a half minutes. It's an opportunity to kind of tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running and what your plans or your priorities might be if elected. We'll start with Wendy Durwakter.
Hello, everyone. I'm Wendy Durwakter. I am honored to be running for city council for this community, and I moved here 15 years ago for my love of the outdoors, and I stayed for my love of this community and all the opportunities here. I raised my two kids and built a career as a composer while waiting tables, multiple jobs at a time, and I don't feel that it would be possible to do this in another community. Duluth is so special, and so I am running to foster everything that's great about Duluth and make sure that it is a place that our kids can come home to after graduation. My kids are now out of the house and studying and working in Minneapolis, and I know that it's very important to retain college graduates in Duluth. So that is my big reason for running, and I hope to earn your vote on November 7.
Thank you very much. Wendy Durwakter is a candidate in District One for the city council. Her opponent is Timothy Meyer.
Thank you, Chuck. Thanks for having me today. I'm Tim Meyer. I'm a 32-year resident of Lakeside, Lester Park neighborhood. I'm an architect. I moved to Duluth to practice here. 15 years ago, I started my own firm, Meyer Group Architecture, doing community development work in the region, primarily for our Native American communities and small communities in the region. I also am a small business owner. I started my business back in 2009, utilizing all of our small business entrepreneur funds and business development in the city. I decided to get into politics back during the pandemic year in 2020. I have a son who's multiracial, a Philippine-American, and some of the things that were going on in the pandemic year made me want to get more involved in politics and hopefully make Duluth a better community for my son and for all of our children.
Thank you very much. Tara Swenson is a candidate in District Four. Her opponent is Howie Hanson, and he's declined to participate today. Tara?
Wonderful. Thank you so much for showing up today and for hosting this forum. I am honored to be here, running for city council of District Four, so that is Lincoln Park, Piedmont, and Duluth Heights. And really, why I'm running is for my kids. So I'm a mom. I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old. And when I moved to Duluth 13 years ago, I fell in love with this city. I fell in love with the lake, and I fell in love with that small-town, big-city feel, how one person you knew was two people away from knowing the person you needed to know. So that's why I fell in love with here, and that's why I stayed here. My husband is a laborer in the local 1091. He has been at the refinery for the last two years, and he's from Floodwood. So really, this was the big city to him, and so that's why we settled here. We live in Piedmont. I guess my background is in HR, so I have worked in multiple industries. I had the pleasure of working in retail, healthcare, engineering, and currently work in insurance, still doing HR work. So I have lots of different experience in working with different teams, and so I would just really be honored to support you or support you as a community if you would support me. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now, we're going to get started with, we have eight formal questions. Again, like Chuck mentioned, each candidate will have up to one minute to answer those questions, because there's three that we probably won't have time for rebuttal, so if we could try to keep your answers to one minute. Kathy's doing a great job with helping with that, as you see her down there. She'll help keep track of the time. We're going to begin with question one, which is around city spending, the budget, and property taxes. As you may know, the city of Duluth received a major increase in LGA last year, local government aid, which the Chamber was happy to help advocate for. That said, there's still, for the third year in a row, there's still a proposal to raise the city levy, tax levy, which, as you can imagine, has come at the chagrin of some of our Chamber members. If elected to the city council, how can you ensure that the city continues to be fiscally responsible while still adequately providing services? We're going to rotate the order in which people answer questions, and for this one, we will begin with Tim.
Thank you, Dan. City Duluth has been complicated in that we are a city of 30 miles long and two miles wide, and a lot of needs that other cities don't have. I think we've been trying to operate for a long time, trying to deal with problems that are beyond what resources we have to deal with them. I know Councilor Kennedy is here today, and she and I visited here just prior about the fact that I think we need to get back to more core services in the city. We don't have the resources to do everything that we've been doing. We need to get back to more of a balanced budget. Dan had mentioned the increase in LGA, but Duluth, the whole time, the whole 30 years I've been here, we've always been overly dependent on our LGA. We need to learn how to generate more income by increasing our tax base.
Thank you, Tim. Tara?
Yes, this is a very big issue and a complex one as well. So yes, property taxes are high, along with a lot of other costs and services that we have in our community right now. And so I really think to grow our tax base is really working on that commercial tax and how do we bring in businesses to offset the impact that it has on Duluthians and the community that we have here. You know, if there is LGA or other funding, I think, you know, we need to look at that, but also make sure that if we can invest that money right now to really improve our infrastructure and our city, we are doing that now, because if we can prevent it from deteriorating more, I think that will, in turn, make it easier and we'll have more money to spend later. So if we can invest that money as needed right now, I think that's really important for our city, and then investing in that commercial tax base.
Thank you. And Wendy?
I understand property taxes are a huge concern everywhere, as well as particularly in District One. We need to keep people with fixed incomes in their homes, and that's very important to me. And so I will do whatever I can to raise property taxes as little as possible. Very grateful for the LGA coming in, and I will be consulting with as many experts and researching exhaustively to explore other options for funding for our very important infrastructure needs.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Potholes in the condition of our city streets is a big issue citywide, including in Districts One and Four. Talking a little bit about your districts, how can the city do a better job of repairing more streets, and can we ever get to a point where people don't have to be complaining so much about it? Tara, we'll begin with you in District Four.
Thank you. This is really one of the big reasons that I ran and why I stepped up. So this past winter, when school was closed multiple times because of snow removal, it was very frustrating as a parent. So when we think of roads and infrastructure and streets, it's really making sure that they're paved and plowed. I think that is a public safety issue for our community that we need to really invest in. So it's making sure that we are investing money as we can in that, and then also communicating a plan. So a lot of what leadership is, and to be successful at it, is how you communicate a message and how you get that out to your audience. So I think if we can also come up with a plan as a city in communicating what it is like or how we are going to fix our streets, at least then maybe people will complain a little less, because they know where their street is on that map and when it will be addressed. So I think it's communication as well.
Thank you. District One, Wendy?
I understand how important maintaining our roads is. I currently just did work on my car, about $1,500 worth of repairs due to potholes that my son drove over, and it's, of course, it's the biggest topic that everybody's talking about. I will work with all of our local authorities on roads to make sure that it's communicated properly to everybody, and I do understand we had the worst winter we've ever had, but our roads are, it's so obvious, they are in need of much better repair. So we will, of course, have to do whatever we can to make sure that they are functioning properly.
Thank you. Also in District One, Tim Meyer.
It's interesting that this should be the question here. Wendy and I both agreed, being out meeting with people in our district, my ears are still burning from some of the things I've heard about snow plowing and fixing our streets. Obviously, this has been a problem the entire time I've lived in Duluth. We've got streets that look like minefields when you get off the main roads in Duluth. I think it's time, and I know the administration has worked hard on this, trying to put a plan in place to fix more of our streets, but honestly, the rate at what we're repairing them is not quick enough. I think we need to go to our federal government through our state senators and try to get a large chunk of community development block grant money or one-time bonding money from the state to do a large project, and then put a really good maintenance plan in place to keep our streets good. So, thank you.
For question three, we're going to talk about parks and recreation and funding. As you likely know, there was a referendum on the ballot last year that did not pass. So with that in mind, how would you, as a city councilor, make sure that we continue to have our parks maintained and improved, but do it in a fiscally responsible way that we can afford? For this one, we'll begin with Wendy.
Parks are very important to me. I had a constituent in my area complain about needles in the Chester Park Trails and the summer Chester Park camp. It was, they had to shut down because all of the staff had to go and pick up needles. That was really disappointing to me, because my kids ended up spending a lot of time in Chester Park. And I would like to see better funding for the parks in Duluth. I think it's all about balancing the budget and exploring, you know, where you can take that money from to ensure that our parks work for all of us across the entire city, especially ones in, the ones I use are, of course, close to my heart.
Thank you. Tim?
I can tell you again, this is one of the other things that made my ears burn out in the neighborhoods. I consider parks and recreation to be part of our core services to our residents in the city. I actually personally donated money to our initiative last fall to try to get the Parks and Rec referendum passed. I worked with Councilor Hobbs on that, and unfortunately, that fell short. I still believe that the city council needs to make this a priority. I think our residents expect it, and we need to make this a priority in the community. I know we've had discussions about what it's going to mean in order to fully fund some of our core services in Duluth. We are going to have to let go of some things in order to fully fund Parks and Rec and police and fire and some of the other core services that we have here.
Thank you. And Tara?
Investments in parks and community centers is definitely one of my priorities, especially being a mom to young children. So I grew up in a community that had parks, and we had community centers, and I remember going there as a child, having birthday parties, and it really created that sense of community, where people came together, there was a connection and that collaboration. So when we look at the referendum, and unfortunately, right, it didn't get passed, we also need to look at, right, the increase in property taxes and all the other things that people are seeing increased in. So when they see another referendum come through, they're not excited about that and they don't want to. So how can we take our current budget, right? There's only so much money in that pie, but we have to invest it, giving back to our parks and our community centers. Also, looking at the communities. So when you look at the Duluth Heights Community Club, those community members are very invested in that community club and have worked together to raise money, to open it, to revitalize it, to fix the rough. So let's allow them, if people want to, give back to their community and build those infrastructures, that we can let them do that.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you, candidates. Duluth, fair or not, Duluth has long had a reputation for being a difficult place to do business. Whether or not you agree, how can the city do a better job of supporting local businesses and encouraging economic development? Tim Meyer, we'll start with you.
Well, thanks, Chuck. That's one I definitely deal with all the time as an architect, especially with people who come here wanting to locate in Duluth, that we still have the perception that we're a difficult city to work with. I honestly think we need to be more business-friendly in terms of how we treat people who come here and want to invest in our city. One thing, I've also noticed that we don't treat our own people here wanting to develop projects very well, which I don't understand, who are people who are wanting to invest their money in the city here. I think we need to designate someone, have a person or a group who helps escort people through our system in order to help them develop projects or develop business here, that we need to create a more business-friendly climate in Duluth.
Thank you. Tara?
So perceptions are a reality. So whether that is a perception or the reality, I think we really need to look at it and look at the process and where is it getting broken down and what are the roadblocks that people are hitting? Because until we can identify the problem in the process, I don't know if we can come up with a solution to it. And I know that Mayor Larson has put time and energy into this, because that has been a perception of our community, and we need to have people that are advocating that this is a good place to do business, that it's an easy, that we have people that want to be here, and so how do we get them here? But I think we really have to look at that current process, figure out where the breakdown is, and then invest our time and energy into that right now.
Thank you. And Wendy?
Supporting local businesses is very important to me. I've always worked for small restaurants that are privately owned by, often by the chef, and I understand how difficult it is to be a small operation anywhere, but understanding that it is difficult in this town, supporting local businesses will be a top priority of mine. And I think it also starts with the residents of Duluth. Where are we all spending our money? Are we all supporting those local businesses every time we spend our money? But yes, definitely, the city can do, can consult with these businesses, find out what the issues are, consult with new business proposals, and look to negotiate ways to make it easier to do business here.
Thank you all. We are at question five. We're sort of at the halfway point, and we're actually ahead of schedule, so we're doing really well on time, just so you know. You may have noticed in the last couple of days, the Duluth Chamber Foundation put out a survey results of surveys that we did for citizens a couple months ago now, and to no surprise, our top issues were homelessness and housing. So that's going to be our next question, specifically with homeless encampments throughout the community that we continue to hear about, and of course, you've all mentioned housing already. We know how much of an issue that is. As city councilor, what strategies and solutions do you think you could bring to the table to help address these major issues? We'll start with Tara.
Another really complex issue that is, as we all know, much bigger than just Duluth. So homelessness is really on the rise in a lot of communities, and I think it's really that we need to work with other agencies, so the county and the state, to address this as a holistic approach. Duluth, we can, I think we have done a great job in investing in resources and tools for the homeless population. We just need to help them get to those resources and utilize them. How do we advocate for that? Some people want the help, some people don't want the help. So how do we find those that want that, and how do we move them through that system so that they can get the mental health resources that they need? They can find the food. We can have them work with CHUM and invest in that. And really, how can we help them find the housing so that they can get off the streets? Because a tent isn't a good place to live. It's not a safe place to live. Some people want that. I would say a lot of them don't.
Thank you. And Wendy?
I think it's really important to understand that homelessness, the increase of homelessness is actually a nationwide problem. We're not alone in this, and so I think we can definitely be looking to what other communities are doing to solve this problem. I think a big way that we can do this in Duluth is to increase our mental health services. A lot of people that are living on the streets are doing so because they don't have the mental health resources they need. Drug addictions make the problem worse. It's really hard. There've been studies done. It's really hard to recover from a drug addiction if you don't have a bed to sleep in. And so we can work to have better supportive housing, and again, just the mental health issues, I think, are really the biggest problem, and then affordable housing is a great solution.
Thank you. And Tim?
I agree with a lot of what Wendy had to say there. I've worked downtown in Duluth for over 30 years now, so I've seen the problem, lived with the problem. When I was on the Public Arts Commission, worked with the Duluth Police to work with the homeless that were living in Lake Place Park. Honestly, what we need, and we don't have enough of in Duluth and downtown Duluth, is supportive housing. We need more housing with services, similar to what we have with the Steve O'Neill apartments in the hillside. We need two or three more projects like this, where people are getting mental health and chemical dependency therapy and treatment, so that they can recover and hopefully even maybe get back into the mainstream, that these people need a safe environment to recover in and hopefully transition into permanent housing. I agree with what Wendy said. I think this isn't a, it isn't a problem of housing, this is a problem of people needing therapy and help, and we need to show this community compassion.
Okay, thank you all.
Downtown is a topic of our next question. As you know, it's a far different place now than it was before the pandemic. Considering the many offices, empty storefronts, fewer people, needles on the ground, other signs of drug use, what is your vision for the future of our downtown? How can we help downtown rebound, and how can we get there? Wendy, we'll start with you.
I used to love going downtown, and I still do, but yes, it's definitely changed quite a bit. I see a lot of growth over in Lincoln Park, and that's wonderful, too. I think we just need to focus on getting businesses in those storefronts and having more housing, more densely, dense housing, so that people are living down there and supporting those businesses. My understanding, downtown's everywhere are suffering because the office population is working from home, and so they're not in these dense communities where they're supporting the downtown businesses, and that's, this community's no different. So we need to find other ways to get people to be motivated to go downtown. Better mass transit is another great opportunity to make that happen.
Thank you. Tim?
I'll say again, I agree with a lot of the statement there. I had a couple weeks ago, was in Minneapolis in the Washington Avenue neighborhood on the north side of downtown, and if you've been down there, the amount of high-density housing Minneapolis has now. We've rewritten our development code in Duluth to enable more high-density and taller housing in the downtown area. I think having higher density, more high-rise housing, and more grocery stores and other supporting businesses, so that we can have more high-density housing downtown would be good. I talked to a developer who had worked with some of the vacated Marisa's buildings, which don't cash flow. So that isn't a solution, to try to reuse some of those buildings. The financial model doesn't work. I think redeveloping with new high-density, high-rise housing would be an answer for our downtown.
Thank you. Moving to District Four candidate Tara Swenson.
Thank you. So I really think downtowns are usually the heart of the city, where people enjoy going. They're hustling and bustling, and as we know, that is not our downtown, and a lot of people don't feel safe there. I used to work downtown, and I would walk the skywalk all the time at lunch, or, you know, take a hot lap when you had a difficult conversation at times, just to be out there, be safe, and there was usually other people out there walking. And since the pandemic, that has not only changed in our community, but other communities. So it's been said a lot, and I think a lot of us share that same vision of, we need to get people back down there, so that we can feel safe, we can connect with one another again, whether that's the housing that we bring, that brings storefronts. The city is doing the grants for storefronts, which I think is phenomenal, but we also need to make sure that people feel safe going into those environments to shop and be in that environment. So I think it is bringing the housing down there, looking at that grant funding, so that we can continue to support small businesses that want to put their storefront down there, so that people can go down there and shop. Minneapolis is a great example. If you've been to Nashville, their downtown is very hustling and bustling with housing and also storefronts. So I think we have great other communities that we can look at to model this after.
Thank you. Question seven is a bit of a follow-up to that, but just kind of scoping outside of downtown, just talking about public safety, again, a little bit of perception versus reality, but the reality is, while some statistics are down as far as crime, there are some statistics that are up currently with crime, including some violent crimes. As a city councilor, how can you help ensure that we adequately address public safety and crime, including violent crime and gun safety? We'll start with Tim.
Well, I'm happy you brought this one up. I had a ride-along with our police department and worked with our police union here back in July, and I can tell you, there's been a lot of stuff going on around the crime rate in Duluth being a lot higher than what people know. That was verified by my visit with our PD directly. We need to pay our policemen better. We need to pay them competitively. We need to get them the equipment and training that they need. We need to make our police force the best in the Midwest. Currently, our police force is one of the lowest-paid police departments in Minnesota. I think we need to change that. And again, it's choices. Those are core services that we need to focus on. It may mean changing how we get some other things done in the community, but I think we need to make our law enforcement a priority here.
Thanks, Tim. Tara?
Public safety is one of the things that I am most passionate about, so being endorsed by the Duluth Police is an honor for me. And I think that, right, we want to raise their rate of pay, we want to make sure that they have the benefits. We also need to make sure that they have the equipment that they need to do their job. You know, I got to do a ride-along as well, which was an amazing experience to do and just very humbling, to be able to go through that, but they don't necessarily have basic equipment that they need. So if you pull up to something and somebody needs a Band-Aid or a bottle of water, I know that's not their job necessarily to provide that, but it's really nice to build that relationship and that gap, in that relationship. So the other part of this is the culture. So we all own the culture of our Duluth Police Department. We should be supporting them, advocating for them. So part of recruitment isn't only your great benefit package, but it's also having a culture that you feel supported in. So if you were to think that body cam in your job was recorded at all times every day, how do we make sure that when they have that, that they are feeling the support if something were to happen, that we have their back as well?
Thank you. And Wendy?
I definitely empathize with the task of being a police officer. I know it's a very difficult job. I think it's really important- very difficult job. I think it's really important to look at high crime rates as a holistic, in a holistic way. And I feel that sending in more police officers into the community is more of a Band-Aid approach. I think that what is making crime rates rise is that a large part of the population is desperate. They don't have adequate income. They don't have affordable housing. They don't have access to childcare services so that they can go to work. They don't have access to mental health resources. So if we fix these problems, our crime rates will be lower and we won't need to put those police officers' lives in danger.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Among the challenges Duluth businesses face in filling jobs, finding qualified, quality employees, is the inability of prospective employees to line up care for their children. What more can the city council do to ensure that childcare options here are both readily available and affordable? We'll start in District Four with Tara.
So as a mom, this is something that we face and many of us face, right? So whether you're a mom or a grandma, grandfather, whatever, dad, you face the same crisis. And I think it's really looking at it from, I don't know if it's a workforce development, but how do we engage people to want to go into that career field? How do we motivate them? If we look at our school districts, so, you know, I had the opportunity, we get to send our son to a 3K program because of a childcare issue as well. And really, it's just being able to get to work and get home from work and pick up our kid. So it could be those hours as well. So looking at alternative ways to support that and trying to motivate and engage individuals to do that. So being in healthcare, that was definitely an issue we faced with our nursing staff in the hospital, that they didn't have childcare for their kids overnight. So, you know, how do our businesses also support that? And maybe opening up other opportunities to have childcare facilities within them so those parents can get to work as well.
Thanks. Moving to District One, Wendy?
I reached a point in my life where I suddenly needed to use childcare services. And I know how hard it is to work through long waiting lists for childcare and to get very creative on how you find a way to work and still take care of your kids. And so I know how important it is to have abundant childcare services. My understanding, in my canvassing in District One, is I'm meeting childcare workers that, or childcare daycare center owners that don't, they can't retain their staff because there's not enough pay for their childcare workers. We need them to be taken care of so that childcare is abundant. And I will be definitely working with state legislators on how to fund this. I know Liz Olson is a real champion of this. And so I will be taking direction of experts on this.
Thanks.
This is a topic I feel like I know a lot about having a seven-year-old. I just have lived through the toddler and pre-k stages with my son. We actually had met as a case study with Lakeside Early Learning here recently with some other candidates to learn more about the business model with childcare and what can we do as either as city councillors or as a community to help our childcare businesses. And one of the things that we learned is that one of the problems with the business model is when some sort of catastrophic event happens with a building or a heating or cooling problem, some expense that comes that the businesses don't anticipate. We did look into some state programs that would put chunks of money into private childcare that help their businesses cash flow. Right now, most childcare, private childcare centers marginally cash flow or lose money, and we need to reverse that.
Thanks much.
Thank you all. That concludes the eight formal questions. That's the fastest time we've done yet. Of course, we planned for four candidates. With three, we go a little faster, but that's okay. It gives us more time to mingle afterwards. But before we let you go, we, of course, want you to provide some closing remarks. Each candidate will have up to one minute. And before you do that, I just want to remind everyone, that election day is November 7. Early voting begins September 22. And again, we're going to, we'll conclude by thanking you all afterwards, but if you could please just finish us off. We're going to change the order just a little bit here. You each get up to one minute to do closing remarks and we will begin with Wendy.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me here again. And I will definitely be operating with passion. I'm very passionate about living here in Duluth. I love this town so much, like many of you. I will operate on my values. I will always operate with integrity and transparency. And I am looking forward to serving you on the city council level as I have been serving the community on the restaurant level. There are many similarities to the level of service and I will definitely be transposing that into the new rule if you should elect me. So I hope to earn your vote on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tim?
Thank you, Dan. I just wanted to say that experience matters. In my candidacy, I've served on six city commissions. I serve currently on a state board. I've been involved actively in both development and in construction and planning in this community. I think with the serious kinds of problems that we have in Duluth right now, we need experience to solve these issues and work together, both with government and the community and business in solving them. I'm ready to start working day one. I will hit the ground running as a city councillor here in Duluth. I have already started working on some of these problems independent of my serving on the council. I feel that I am the best choice to be city councillor in District One.
Thank you all. And just a reminder, these forms will be uploaded on the DNT website. I'm sorry. I almost shortchanged it there. Sorry.
What about me? Am I good? Okay, sorry. So really, my motto has been, nothing changes if nothing changes. And I've said that over and over again. And I really think that Duluth is at a critical point right now. Our council is getting potentially a lot of new faces up there. And so experience, yes, Tim, does matter. And so I have lots of leadership experience. I have lots of industry experience. I'm not afraid to work with you, to collaborate, to get down and do the work to solve the issues that we have. So again, focusing on public safety, making sure that our police officers, our fire, have what they need to do their job, focusing on perks and community centers. So how do we make sure that they're safe, that people are going there, that they're creating that connection and that community? Budget transparency. So just where is our money going? We all talk about, we want to give people more money. There's only so much money. So how do we do that? How do we rally people together? How do we engage this community to be a part of the solution? Because the city council, the mayor, they can't do it alone. We need everybody to come together and really work as a team to make Duluth the best that it can be.
Now, I can plug the DNT website. Sorry about that, Tara. Just a reminder that these forms will be posted on the DNT website. Again, thank you to our partners at the DNT, our chamber staff, our team, and thank you all for being here. And we'll close the show. If you could please join me in our honor of applause for thanking these candidates for being here. Thank you all.